Welcome back into the shed. It is time for another episode of Ballot Banter, the series where we are breaking down each of the four new Portland City Council districts with a special guest. And today I'm really excited because my special guest is none other than Mia Burke. Mia is a District Three resident, someone who has deep experience working for the city of Portland. She is actually considered one of the pioneers of Portland's bicycling legacy. She worked under then Commissioner Earl Blumenauer as the bicycle coordinator for the Portland Bureau of Transportation. And after her time at the city of Portland, she went on to be the president and founder and CEO of Alta Planning and Design, which is now a national firm that plans all sorts of amazing bicycle infrastructure all over the place. She also went on to found Alta Bike Share and had all sorts of experience at just the sort of the beginning of the bike share revolution in America. Mia was right there in the trenches of all that. And since leaving the bike world, Mia has gone on to do all sorts of other things, including being a leader in the Jewish community, establishing a nonprofit that's got all sorts of great programming for Jewish Portlanders to get together. It's on Sandy, by the way, so that's something to note for the upcoming Sandy project. I haven't even mentioned Mia also wrote this really great book, Joy Ride, which is all about her experience working at the Portland Bureau of Transportation, back in what a lot of people would think is the heyday of our cycling culture. I'm just so thrilled to have you here, Mia. Mia, thanks so much for coming into the shed to talk about District Three.
Good to see you, Jonathan.
Okay, District Three, let's set the table a little bit with just the geography. So District Three is everything from the river, right, over to I-205, north to I-84. And then there's like this peninsula south of Powell into Brentwood, Darlington, Creston, Kettleworth. So everything southeast of that, except of course, Sellwood and Reed and all that.
Right.
How did I do? Oh, there's a little bit of north of I-84, like into Rose, Roseway.
Yeah.
Right? So a couple neighborhoods north of I-84, but essentially everything that's not East Portland and everything that's not Sellwood, Eastmoreland.
Yeah, yeah.
So that's the geography.
It's a big district. Well, I guess all the districts are big.
I think District Three is, I don't know, more topographically certainly pretty homogenous and doesn't really have, I mean, it's got Mount Tabor.
It's got Mount Tabor.
So there's that.
We mostly have a connected grid. We do have the Central East Side, so that's really important to know. So we have a very large business district.
Yep.
We have a lot of mini business districts on the main streets like Hawthorne and Division in Belmont. So keep that in mind. We do go pretty far east. We do go pretty far south, so we have a lot of demographic diversity.
And I think historically, safe to say, some of the higher, or if not highest, biking rate areas in the whole city, if not even transit, so they've got a good grid. So before we get into the candidates, is there anything else about District Three that you think is distinctive?
I just want to tell you that I lived in District Three now for 32 years, the whole time I've lived in Portland. So this is, you know, where my roots are essentially and where I've brought up my kids and my two older ones that have graduated from high school. My youngest, who's in middle school. So yeah, so that's, you know, certainly a real deep tie. And, you know, since I have the transportation background, like knowledge of every street in the whole district. I think the Central East Side is, and the Central East Side and the inner neighborhoods, like the Buckman neighborhoods, we do have a high disproportionate number of the social services and a lot of these issues related to homelessness and the challenging social issues that have been happening. The Central East Side and those inner neighborhoods have really been dealing with the brunt of it. Like, we feel like it's downtown and this, this area, I mean, there's lots of areas, I get it, all over the city, but there's just, that's been on everybody's minds and there's no way to escape it.
So the Central East Side, yeah.
The Central East Side, and then the inner neighborhoods, Buckman, Sunnyside, yeah, those have been, you know, very high concentrations of very challenging, very challenging situations.
Okay, how are you feeling about the election in general? And have you been going to forums and events and like, how have you been involved?
So hmm, it's an interesting time, isn't it?
Yeah, you could say that.
It's really, I think it's exciting that, that so many people are engaged. I mean, it's really different. It's really exciting. I mean, I think I, like many people, really had reached the point of feeling like we have got to overhaul the commissioner's style of government. It was not serving us anymore. I worked for the city in the 1990s under the great Earl Blumenauer as my first city commissioner. And at that time, maybe we were small enough and maybe Earl was just the right guy because he was a master at getting things done under the commissioner's style of government. But I, I think it stopped serving us very well pretty quickly after that. And since I did work then as a contractor after that, so for basically the whole time I've been in Portland, I've been working with and for around government and have really come to see how the commissioner's style of government was really holding us back. I also got to work in like hundreds of cities as a work as a consultant and work with Bike Share. So I also got to see the contrast of how Portland's form of government was relative to everyone else and came back increasingly in despair every time I would come home to Portland and just feel that we're stuck, that we are hamstrung, that we are so dysfunctional and that there's a lot of reasons and you could like argue about it and you could postulate, but at the core of it for me and having the commissioners, the city council people acting as bureaucrats in charge of bureaus when people that came in all the way back in the 90s, like we went from having Earl Blumenauer as our commissioner to Jim Franciscone. And Jim was a lawyer, great guy, became fond of him as a human. He literally knew nothing about bicycle and pedestrian transportation and he never visited our zone of the city, of our cubicles, didn't have any curiosity about it, but he was in charge of transportation and we felt like we had spent many years at that point getting with a lot of progress in the city. You know, we had done the Bicycle Master Plan and we were very quickly putting in bikeways and overhauling the bike parking code and doing Saferoots to school. And boom, we felt like, boom, we just fell off a cliff. We have to start over. We're starting from scratch. And that's really when, that was kind of when one of the big turns happened in the bicycle transportation world. So I kept seeing that and then I was in all these other cities and I just kept back, coming back going like, we need a strong, we need a city manager who manages the city and we need to have council people that represent districts and we need to have, in my opinion, a strong mayor. We didn't end up going in that direction, but so that's a long way of saying, I don't love all the pieces of the way this has come together, but I am hopeful that it's gonna be, that it's gonna, it is a change and change is exciting and I love change. So I'm like, okay, this is happening. Let's do our best to get some really good people on city council. I am, I am actually really excited by the caliber of the people running. There's a lot of great people running. And I'm excited by the fact that there's districts. I'm not super excited about the three people for district. To me that I'm like, I guess the jury's out, we'll see. I'm, my curiosity is peaked by ranked choice voting. I'm not sold and I'm not not sold. I just don't know how it's gonna turn out, so I'm just curious. And I think that there's a lot of people running, so the big, you know, it's, I think it's a lot to ask voters to have to, have to research 30 people. And that's how many people are running in District Three. So that, that causes me some, that causes me some concern.
I hear you on that.
But overall, I'd say for the city of Portland, I am cautiously optimistic.
Okay, we got a cautiously optimistic out of you after that. So that's, I think that's saying something. You're willing to give it a try, but it sounds like you saw a lot of these problems early on. And if you weren't on the charter commission, I don't know, maybe you were in someone's ear hopefully because it sounds like you kind of.
I wasn't and I actually sent an email saying like, hey, I'll be on the charter commission, but, and it was during COVID, it didn't go anywhere.
Oh, I hear you.
Sorry.
Well, interesting. Well, you did something about it. You got together with some friends and, well, you got together with some folks in your district and you put together this group called 12 for PDX. So can you tell me a little bit more about that?
Yeah, so I was invited to join a group of people that are people from all over the city who are not, it's really just a group of residents, okay? We don't see ourselves as aligned with any special interest group and that really is a differentiator because all the entities that are doing endorsements are either aligned with the unions, aligned with the business groups, aligned with the media outlet. And we just said, hey, we're just a group of citizens. We're from a lot of different walks of life. We have like business owners, we have some medical professionals, we have a school nurse, we have some younger people, we have different, all kinds of different demographics. We have, you know, a couple lawyers, there's a couple architects, there's another, I think there's a designer, there's a couple nonprofit people. And we, we said that we're together, we're gonna talk this through. And all of us are kind of what we defined as the new middle. We're not ideologically strong on either side of the spectrum. We all had enough in common to where we could talk things through without shouting, without being super dogmatic, without being super idealistic. And it made for some really robust discussions. We came up with a set of criteria by which to evaluate the candidates. And we vetted all summer long, we vetted the candidates that had jumped into the race at that time. We did cut it off on August 1st and there are more people that have jumped in after that, so we can talk about that. But we vetted the, we vetted all the candidates against the criteria based on whatever they had put out publicly, whatever they had on their websites, whatever they were saying at forums. There weren't as many forums this summer as there are now, but there were some. And then we invited 38 people across the four districts to interview. We then had a big discussion around all those people, again, against the criteria, and we recommended 22 across the four districts. So in District Three, we just recommended four. We're not saying in any order to rank them. And I have some thoughts on a couple others that I could talk about as well.
Wow, that's, and what's amazing part of that to me is that that many people were willing to engage in your process, a process of just regular Portlanders essentially. I mean, I think a lot of you are accomplished people, successful people, which is, you know, important in terms of having people understand 12 for PDX. But the fact that all these candidates were willing to do your interview and go through your process, I think is one of the aspects of it, I think, is exciting of who's running and the amount of access they've given to just such a variety of different groups.
We spent hundreds of hours doing the work of vetting and talking and interviewing. We, we did not, not every single one accepted the opportunity to interview. Maybe they didn't know us, maybe they weren't quite organized themselves, but most did. And yeah, and it was really cool getting to meet them. And again, it kind of gave me a little more hope about this, about the future.
Okay.
Because I got to meet not just the candidates in District Three, but a lot of the other candidates as well. And I got to see that, you know what, there's a lot of really good people running and that gave me, that gave me hope.
Cool. Okay, I wanted to share the endorsements that you all came up with for this district. But I think it'd be helpful for folks to hear, hear about the candidates that are running. So I'm just gonna go down the list.
The whole list?
No, because I think at this point, it's, it's easier for folks to kind of get their head and arms around all this if we limit it to some degree. So I've got, I think I've got 12 or 13 on my list out of the 30.
All right. How did you narrow them down?
I looked at the matching funds, whether they'd qualified for public matching funds to some degree, although some of them came in late. And I entered, I included some of those folks that didn't get the matching funds, let's say. And I also did it just based on my own personal vibes of following the race for many months and seeing like who's showing up. I was also considering who's gone on other media outlets, so like the OPB had, you know, a set of forums in each district. And I'm like, well, who did they invite, right? And should they be on the list or not? So, you know, there, there's some on here that, well, I'm gonna, I'll ask you at the end if I left any off and then we can just put them on. And this isn't any kind of like official endorsement list or anything. This is just like, let's start talking about the candidates. First one, alphabetically Rex Burkholder, former Metro Councillor, former co-founder of the BTA back in the 90s, Bicycle Transportation Alliance, and now the Street Trust. And after that, a lot of other interesting things, you know, got outdoor school for all passed, among other things. Next one, Jesse Cornet, intriguing candidate, currently a policy director for Oregon Recovers, has done political work with Blumenauer, was Bernie Sanders' body man is, is the thing he likes to talk about, which I guess is sort of like a bodyguard-ish thing and traveled with Bernie Sanders. So I also have to say Jesse has the more visits to Bike Happy, the most visits to Bike Happy Hour so far. He pretty much comes every week now, which is fun. Daniel DeMello, who's on the Budget Advisory Committee for the Joint Office of Homeland Services and Multnomah County's budget. Chris Flannery, they're, they work at the city of Portland's Housing Bureau with a background in union organizing. Harrison Cass, who's one of these late additions, Rene Gonzalez's policy advisor. And is it Philippe or Philip? Did you?
Philippe.
Philippe, okay. Philippe Knab is an attorney and program manager for Washington State Office of Civil Legal Aid. The next one, Tiffany Koyama Lane, third grade teacher for 16 years in PPS. Also does a ton of community organizing with Portland Association of Teachers, so a lot of union organizing work. Angelita Murillo, she's PNW Policy Angel on, online. That's where I kind of first probably came in contact with her. She worked for Joanne Hardesty and now she works for Hunger Free Oregon, which is a nonprofit doing legislative policy work for them. Steve Novick, who a lot of folks already know, I just did a story about him. He came to Bike Happy Hour and asked some really, I think, really good questions of the biking community. He's a former commissioner, environmental lawyer. Achlam Osman, who's a Somali-American 22-year-old, such an exciting candidacy. If she doesn't get picked, I think we're gonna see more of her to come for sure. Portland State grad, served on the Multnomah Youth Commission. And the next one, Kessia Warner, another late addition, super wonky, like long record working for government agencies and like administrative roles and compliance roles. She had a stint as Deputy Director of the Portland Fire Bureau. She was a division manager at PBOT years ago in the parking enforcement area. So just a really interesting background and lots of government experience. And then the last one I'll mention is Luke Zach, who works for Travel Salem, which is a tourism promotion nonprofit that promotes Willamette Valley. So are there any that come to mind that I left off? I didn't, I don't have John Walker on my list. I should put him on there for sure.
I think he's a good guy and he deserves to be on this list of like.
Oh, for sure. Yeah. And I think.
It's like a health, health analyst for the Oregon Health Authority, really wonky too, kind of in that Daniel DeMello category.
Yeah, that's true. I saw him at the OPB forum at Gigantic Brewing and I was, I was impressed.
Yeah.
So yeah, and definitely, as folks probably know, hopefully know, you can rank six people. So it's important to think about not just who's gonna win, but who deserves one of your top six rankings, right? So a lot of names on this list, I think, could be potentially worth ranking. Let's look at just the amount of contributions, so the overall amount of people that have donated to campaigns, just as another way for folks to kind of handicap the race, so to speak, and try to understand the relative popularity going in. So the top four contributions right now is, number one is Tiffany Koyama Lane, teacher Tiffany, and then Angelita Murillo, and then Jesse Cornet, and then Steve Novick. So they've all got well over a thousand individual contributions. And then there's a bit of a drop off after that. So that's kind of gives you a sense of sort of who's leading in terms of just general popularity, let's say. And it also matches up with the endorsements and to some degree, all four of those getting some key endorsements. So endorsement wise, Willamette Week picked Steve Novick. Philippe Knab, which was a surprise to me, so I haven't heard a ton about him beside that. And also Crystal Azul Otero, who wasn't on my list.
We.
How did Willie Week?
Never heard of her, so I don't know.
Yeah, and I did a little cursory research.
Really surprised by that.
And I didn't see a lot on her. She doesn't have any endorsements.
I was very surprised by that.
So it's interesting. I think the local media has had such a hard time with this race just for the same reason everybody is. There's just so many people running and it's hard to get them all in. How do you really, it's just difficult.
The Oregonians sent everybody a questionnaire and from that chose five.
Yeah.
Or six maybe that they interviewed. So they really did a very intentional process.
They did. So I was, the O picked Kessia Warner, Steve Novick and Jesse Cornet.
Yep.
And they also had as finalists, Angelita Murillo and Harrison Cass.
Yep.
But they didn't say to rank them. They just had them as finalists. So that's interesting.
Yep.
And Portland Mercury, maybe not too surprisingly, staking out sort of the left wing of everything. Angelita Murillo, Steve Novick and Tiffany Koyama Lane were the three that they chose. And they also said to rank Chris Flannery, Rex Burkholder and Jesse Cornet.
Yep.
So there's that. Other important endorsements in District Three, here we go, with the Portland Police Association. They endorsed Steve Novick, Daniel DeMello, and then of course Harrison Cass and Kessia Warner, both of who have also been endorsed by Rene Gonzalez. Three of those four have also been endorsed by Rene Gonzalez, DeMello, Cass and Warner. Metro Chamber, formerly Portland Business Alliance, they endorsed Jesse Cornet, Steve Novick, Daniel DeMello, Rex Burkholder and Kessia Warner. And then the Street Trust, they endorsed Tiffany Koyama Lane, Angelita Murillo, Jesse Cornet and Rex Burkholder. So tell me who 12 for PDX chose and if you have anything, well, first of all, I want to ask.
A bunch of other groups, like there's all these business groups and Realtor groups. United for Portland, Revitalize Portland, et cetera.
Yeah, there's tons. Go to the Rose City Reform Candidate Tracker page. It's the best thing to do. I just tried to pick out a few that I thought are particularly whatever influential or notable. Anything you want to say about the media endorsements or do you think they matter? What do you?
I think everything matters in this race. I mean, I think what I find intriguing is there's, this has really energized people, okay? So backstarting, so our group, as I mentioned, we had a process and we, we did rely heavily on Rose City Reform in those early months because they were doing a great job of tracking all the candidates in a very neutral way. We, we wanted to not be aligned with any particular endorsing entity. You know, almost all the other endorsing groups, like the unions, like the business groups, like the Realtor groups, they all, and, and the lefty groups, you know, they all have vested interests. There's all the social service organizations have big contracts with the city, so they have a vested interest. The unions all have a vested interest, so we wanted to, we wanted to be neutral. So I'd say that's a differentiator is that we don't have alliances with any of those groups. Okay, so just want to be clear. And I think it's really important for Portlanders to look at all of them. I don't think there's any such thing as a right wing group in Portland. All there is are a lot of folks that in Portland, you would consider the right wing as the moderate groups, which are the business groups. They're all very thoughtful. They've all really worked hard. They all are really trying, I think we're in sync about a lot of things. And that's why our criteria is based on what we think is that, really that middle lane, which hits upon what we think is the, what the majority really cares about. And our focus was on the five following criteria. A history of collaboration. This new form of government is 100% reliant upon collaboration because there's three people representing each district and they have to work together. It's not clear how the voting, how, how much power they're gonna have collectively or as an individual. But there's no question that collaboration with each other and with the mayor and the city manager is going to be critical. So for us, it wasn't just words. It was show us what you've actually, where you've actually collaborated to get things done. So our number two criteria is a record of achievement of getting things done. The third is real life applicable, applicable experience. The fourth is demonstration of fiscal responsibility. These people are responsible for our money, our taxpayer dollars, and we want them to not just be talking and yelling and trying to tear things down, but really know that they're gonna be putting our good, our, our dollars to work. And then a broad-based mindset. So we avoided candidates that were polemical, purely ideological, extreme, opinionated exclusively. We were looking for those that really had a broad base that was looking out after the whole city. All of us, livability issues, economic issues, safety issues, functionality issues as a society, people that were gonna help move Portland forward. And so we really looked at that broad-based mindset. So those were our five criteria. There you go. And I, you want me to now, what do you want me to do? Is talk about the ones that we did?
Drum roll please, who are the winners?
Do you want me to do that or do you want me to talk about, okay, is that good?
Yeah, that's great. That's an impressive set of criteria. I'm just really impressed with, with this group. I mean, because folks haven't mentioned it, but you know, they've got lit. You've got a website. You made a voter's guide.
Okay, so I should tell you, we worked really hard all summer.
Funding from anywhere? Like, how did this come about?
We, we just have leaders, you know, leaders lead. And so our leaders, our leaders came together, gathered people and then we all contributed our time. Our goal was to get into the voter's pamphlet and to be able to have meaningful literature. So we did cut off our endorsement process on August 1st. So we did miss some candidates that came in after. Our endorsements are in the voter's guide and that was important to us. So if we were to do it again, I, you know, I, I don't know, you know, do we then go back and look at people that weren't in, that didn't jump in? We just had to have, we decided that having a consistent and thoughtful process was really important to us. We raised a little bit of money just to develop these flyers. We didn't mail them to every household, so it's, it's not that much money. And we developed a little website and some flyers and some posters and that's it. We just paid for it ourselves.
Cool. All right. So who'd you pick for District Three?
Okay, so for District Three, we picked four candidates and that would be Rex Burkholder, Jesse Cornet, Philippe Knob and Steve Novick. And I'm gonna tell you a little bit about those four.
Please do.
Do what you want to hear. So Rex, as everyone probably, I mean, hopefully folks in the biking world know, a long time ago, Rex was really of the four, the four, at the forefront of the active transportation movement. He was a co-founder of the Bicycle Transportation Alliance, which is now the Street Trust. He was a Metro Councillor for many years. In later years, the thing that I personally was the most just so grateful for is that he led as a volunteer, the coalition that passed outdoor school for all. He brought together a coalition across the state that led that. The, the bill that passed sets aside lottery dollars to fund outdoor school and it's an incredible accomplishment. So Rex is a thoughtful guy. He has, he did make a compelling case that he, when he was on Metro Council, that they switched at that point to a district model. And he was there for that transition and that he's probably the only one that's art, that's gone through a transition like that from a citywide model to a district model. I don't know all the details, but he made a compelling case that he has that deep experience of working on a council where you do collaborate and it's a district-based model. So for those reasons, we picked Rex.
Sounds good.
Jesse Cornet's an interesting guy. I did not know him before this election and we were all impressed by the fact that he has a really fascinating lived experience, having experienced tremendous hardships as a younger person, that he has worked his way through some business parts of his career, a number of policy positions. He's worked for politicians. He worked for Mark Hatfield, so he's also worked for Republican. He's worked for Bernie Sanders. Obviously, those are kind of different parts of the spectrum when it comes to politics. And he now works for Oregon Recovers. He, bicycling people might want to know that he rode his bike to our interview, as did Rex and Philippe Knob. He's, he's a really thoughtful guy. Every question that we asked him, he really paused and he thinks deeply. He doesn't just knee-jerk respond. He goes deep into the learning from all sides. He picks up the phone. He, he really works on the statistical side to understand and be grounded in whatever the issue is. And I think he's truly really middle, like he is very lefty and he's very moderate and he's kind of all those things. So that's why he got, I think consistently, like I think he got all the endorsements and I think that really said something about Jesse. I'm excited about Jesse's candidacy.
Yeah, he had a fascinating array of endorsements.
He really did.
He was also in the Reserve Sheriff Deputy, thinks we've got, at least his law enforcement background as well.
Yes, and he had a personal experience with a very close friend that was killed by the Portland police. And yet he also talked deeply. I mean, he kind of reminds me in District One of Terrence Hayes, who has like this really deep personal experience with the police, but also believes passionately in community policing and having a right-sized, really functional police force as the foundation of a safe society, while understanding that yes, there's things that we need to fix, there's things we need to evolve. And Jesse has that experience. He didn't get endorsed by the Portland Police Association because he refused to accept the endorsement. He said because of his personal experience, he didn't feel right being endorsed, but it doesn't mean he's against the police. He, he's not knee-jerk in that way. He's just really thoughtful and deep in his, in his way of reflecting on what we need here in Portland.
Good.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm, I'm really curious about Philippe Knob.
Yeah, Philippe impressed us and he was a surprise. I think he's come across as a surprise for all of us. He is a Mexican-American attorney who has focused his career in the bulk of it in the last 10 years on renter and tenant rights, which is interesting because that is an issue that's come up a lot in Portland is the, you know, affordable housing and the ability of people to stay in their homes and rent controls and all those kinds of things. So, but he came across it not in like a knee-jerk, lefty kind of way or knee-jerk any, any way kind of way. Again, it was very thoughtful and it really talked, talked, I think it will speak to a lot of people who have, who care a lot about how we, how we are setting up our protections, but not in a way that makes it so hard for landlords who oftentimes complain. And I'm a landlord, so I'll tell you that my, my experience as a landlord is it's really difficult if you have really difficult tenants to do anything about it, that there's a real, there's a tremendous, this is a very tenant-friendly state and a tenant-friendly city. And that can be very hard for the good landlords, the good people who are just, you know, have really have decent properties and we take care of them and we take care of our people. But if there are things that goes, go wrong, that it's really, really hard for us to be able to kind of come out of it without losing our shirts. So he talked about all of that in a very moderate way, but he also, like most of the candidates, centered in on homelessness, houselessness, how we're going to improve and get this situation to be more humane for everybody in society. And he really, he came at it from a very logical and thoughtful and data-driven approach. And he brought a really detailed set of solutions that were very compelling, very humane, very compassionate, but also very much like we need to get a handle on this and move things forward.
Did he have any relevant experience though in, in, in government beyond like the legal world or where did he get his, did that have, was that a concern for you at all?
I don't remember. I don't remember. That's pretty much all I can remember from the interviews.
Oh, interesting. Yeah, okay. Yeah, worth, definitely.
It was compelling. Yeah, it appealed to our whole group, so.
Make a note to do some research on Philippe Knob there. And then Steve Novick, what was your impression after talking to him?
Well, you know, I had this experience, having been a contractor to the city on Bike Share under Steve Novick. So, you know, I was curious how much he'd evolved and how much he'd learned and where he was at now. And I think that, you know, first and foremost, he has the experience of having, he's the only one besides Dan Ryan, who's now on city council and Steve would be. he's the only one besides Dan Ryan, who's now on city council, and Steve would be the only former city council person. And he's the one with direct experience in transportation, and that really came across. You know, his ability to, he knows everybody, and I'll say that about Rex also, like, knowing who to call, having the relationships with the county, having the relationships with the the head of the Police Bureau and the Fire Bureau and the business groups and the unions. Like, Steve has all those relationships. And there, for him, like, there's no learning curve, and we felt like that with Rex too. Like, and this is going to be a big learning curve. So folks that come in that have no experience with our form of city government, with our, all of our different groups are going to have a learning curve, and we felt like Steve's going to hit the ground running. He seemed to me very, he seemed to me in all of our group that he had learned a lot from his time on council and from his time after council. And we specifically asked him, "What'd you learn?" And he talked about being humble and being a person who became a better listener and a better at working with all the different constituents to move things forward. We all know that he, in the transportation world, that his, one of his feathers in his cap is the funding measures that really then ultimately went into making things more pedestrian and bicycle-friendly. And he's really proud of that, and it's hard to deny that he put his heart and soul into those efforts that ultimately succeeded, as well as launching Bike Share, you know, which we're happy about. So, yeah, so those are some of the things that impressed us with Steve. And he's got some other parts of his, you know, he's really all about at this point, smart guns, safe guns. He had some other things he's passionate about that are broader than just transportation, and those things were, you know, really interesting to hear as well.
Yeah, I love that he's a free thinker.
He's definitely a free thinker.
And he comes up with sometimes wild ideas, but I just kind of like, I think there's people running, and sometimes you see in the political world where they've just got kind of like a party line kind of thing, or they've got a set of beliefs that you know they're going to answer every question the same way. And I just personally find that so uninteresting, and frankly, like, I tend to be drawn to candidates that will just come up with new ideas, or, yeah, have the humility. And I know Steve talks about that a lot on the trail of, you know, saying, he doesn't have necessarily all the perfect ideas right now, but he's humble enough to know that, you know, he needs to just like, listen and begin his thing with using golf courses for housing. And so, and just the way he approaches it, like when he came to Bike Happy Hour and was talking about, you know, how can we get biking back to where it was, you know, 10 years ago? What do you all think we should do and all that kind of stuff? So, yeah, I like the way Steve thinks. And it's arguable that he didn't get re-elected because he sort of sacrificed himself for the funding measure that he helped get basically to pass the first time in 2016. I mean, you don't start a new tax like that.
It was a deeply unpopular measure. It was a deeply unpopular measure. And it went through, you know, it was, I'm sure it was an agonizing process for him to lead.
There's a really fascinating article in the Oregonian about, I think it was Oregonian or coin or something about that, about how, yeah, he basically says that he knows that that costume, his reelection was getting fixing our streets passed. But I think, looking back now, we're all really happy that it got passed, and that work is very well-respected. So I think that bodes well for him making a second run at council, for sure. Let's see. Before we get into who we think is going to win and kind of the prediction aspect, I want to go into, like, just transportation-wise. I made a few notes on some of the candidates, thinking like, you know, are they bringing up transportation on the trail? I don't know if you have any thoughts about transportation-specific stuff on any of the candidates, but I'll just get it going here. I know Tiffany Koyama-Lane has been talking about transportation quite a bit. She is someone who rides around the city. She actually takes a scooter sometimes to school. And her OPB answer in the forum that they did, she brought up traffic violence as like one of the biggest issues that she doesn't think is getting enough talked about on the, in the campaigns or in the forums. And she said that the death of Jeanne Diaz in front of the Belmont Library was a policy failure. So she said some pretty strong things about transportation. Rex Burkholder, of course. I think one of the things about Rex, transportation-wise, is that he was around when the precursor to the Interstate Bridge Replacement Program happened, which is called the Columbia River Crossing. He was a Metro Councilor. There's a good chance that if he does win a seat, that that's going to be in the water again, or actually, it will be for sure, because it doesn't look like it's going anywhere anytime soon except forward. So Rex could be on council, and who knows, representing the city on some Metro Committee around the Interstate Bridge Replacement Program. So that would be an interesting full-circle thing. Angela Marillo brings up cycling a lot. She's also specifically talking about the Sandy Boulevard Bike Lane Project, which is coming up next year or so. Who else? Daniel DeMello has been really strong on transportation. He rides his cargo bike around town. He's come to Bike Happy Hour a few times as well. He's pushed for building the downtown MAX Tunnel. And so we have this thing, some of the advocates and I were talking about, any candidate that's actually getting specific and naming things that are like, you know, usually only bike advocacy people really care about or talk about, or urbanists talk about, any candidate that's doing that is capturing our attention. So the fact that DeMello, first of all, knows about the MAX Tunnel project is one thing, but then to be bringing it up in campaign events is actually really cool. He told Bike Loud that, this is Daniel DeMello, he told Bike Loud, which is a nonprofit group doing bike advocacy, if Portland wants to hit its 25% goal by 2030, he wants to even target a higher mode share during the summer months, possibly around 50% to balance out the winter drop-off. So he's definitely thinking about transportation. You mentioned Jesse Cornet. He is a daily bike rider, for sure, so he's been getting around a lot. When I interviewed him in 2010, when he ran for council, just as a, I think he was working at Portland State at the time, he was on his bike back then, I have to say too. So this is someone who's ridden a bike most of his life. And I think that's an important aspect, if you're going to be understanding bicycling and just transportation issues in general. I think Novick could maybe make an argument that he's the strongest transportation candidate in the field in this district, just because of his experience with PBOT, and he was around for so many important sort of moments, you know. He had a lot to do with Better NATO and getting that to fruition. Do you think there's any dark horse that you think could slip in that maybe you've heard about but don't know as much about, or you think isn't getting talked about as much by the media who could surprise people?
Well, I think that Kesia Wanner is getting, is a dark horse. Like, I'm intrigued by her. I wish she had jumped in before, so we could have evaluated her, but she's really intriguing to me.
I totally, I want to stop you. I'd love to hear more from you about her, because I think, given all her government experience and your government experience, like, yeah, tell me more about how you think she'd be as a commissioner, what you make of her sort of late rise here. She only announced like in September, I think.
Yeah, it surprised me that you could even jump in in September. I thought that August 31st was the cutoff, so bad on me. But I found it intriguing that she's worked for the different bureaus, and she describes herself as like a budget hawk, a budget wonk. And I think that could be really appealing, to have somebody that's really dialed down. We have a lot of money flowing around in our city, and we, they just came out in the Oregonian, there's going to be a budget cuts coming ahead, and having somebody that really understands the budget and isn't really a pure advocate for anything, but is really like focused on the money, could be really valuable. So I'm intrigued. Like I said, I don't know that much about her. And I think, you know, in terms of dark horses, I mean, the people, some of the others that are interesting and intriguing, that Daniel DeMello's intriguing, Harrison Cass is intriguing.
You think, I don't think, I don't think he's that intriguing, honestly. He seems kind of like just.
Like he jumped in at the last second.
Yeah, last second, you know.
Because Renee told him that.
Renee wanted to, yeah, that's what it seems like to me.
Yeah, I don't know.
He had some pretty, but I gave him respect for showing up to the OPB Forum at Gigantic.
You know what, I want to give respect to everyone that jumped into this race, okay? I want to give respect to those that have never run for public office before, which is a lot of them, and have put their necks out there and have raised money and have shown up and have been in it from the beginning. So I want to give respect. I would like to encourage all the candidates that we didn't endorse or that maybe haven't gotten as much traction. Some of them, the reason we didn't endorse, isn't because they're not a great person, or because they wouldn't, maybe they will do great things, but we felt like more experience out there actually getting things done will really help them be a more compelling candidate. When we asked the questions or when we looked to see what actually moved the dial, where was your leadership that brought things along? We saw a lot of people that have, that we felt like, gosh, I can't wait to see what you do when you step out of that role that you've been in for a long time and go do something else and show that you have been outside of a limited role with limited responsibilities, and can really understand how the majority of Portland look beyond the narrow lane of whatever you're in and look to what's going on around. And I guess, you know, I got involved because I've been in Portland for 32 years. I've brought up three kids here. I was in the city government. I then led two different firms. I taught at Portland State. I started an institute at Portland State. I've been deeply involved with a lot of nonprofits. I've donated money to nonprofits. I volunteered time with nonprofits. I started a nonprofit. I own real estate. I own my home. I pay a lot of taxes. We all pay a lot of taxes. The building that we bought, we bought two buildings for Alta Planning and Design, both in the Central East Side. One we've sold a long time ago. The other one's in the Central East Side, and Alta moved downtown, which is great for Alta, but it's been an unoccupied building. It's in a tough location. We're really in the thick of what are some of Portland's really deep social service problems. My house, which is here in District 3, we've had non-stop petty crime kind of stuff. Our garage has been broken into multiple times. All my bikes have been stolen. That sucks. Our car's been broken into. Our catalytic converters got stolen. Somebody the other, just this summer, hot-wired a Kia Soul and purposefully smashed into my car that was parked in front of my house, then abandoned the car and took off.
Wow.
So, and every single one of those, the police are very nice, and they've come and they've said, "Sorry, there's nothing we can do. File for insurance." So, you know, I think we, I think me and many people feel like, we can do so much better than this. This is a beautiful city. It's full of beautiful people with great ideas, who want to make this city amazing. And something has really gone wrong in the last number of years, and we've like fallen off a cliff. And we want better for our, we want better. And so that's why we endorsed these people, because we feel like these people, I should say that District 2 and 3 are only two-year terms. So we get another shot in two years, but incumbents usually get locked in for a long time. So each district, there's so many candidates to go through. We wanted to do the homework and hopefully make it a little bit easier to narrow it down for folks.
Yeah, yeah, I hear you. Yeah, I can appreciate that. I think what you're getting at is sort of like, helping people understand your opinion that Portland should have and has moved into the center politically, overall, majority-wise. And I hear what you're saying, and I heard you say city-wide, but I'm just curious if that's going to play out in Southeast. I'm really fascinated to see the results and to see how much toward the center, which I agree with you. I've moved to the center. The city has moved to the center overall. I think that's safe to just say, to some degree, you know, in terms of like what's going on politically here. We can argue about why or who's to blame for that. But when it comes to Southeast, which has always been sort of the hotbed of the left wing. I'm really curious how. And if you look at, I mean, Tiffany Koyama-Lane, very strongly progressive, left of the political spectrum, she's got more contributions than anybody in the race, and just all this like network of support. And I'm curious how that's going to play out on Election Day.
I'm curious too. I mean, she does have the Portland Teachers Association, and they've been pushing her from the very beginning. And so that's a particular, has a big, big base of support. And so that's something that she's got, and you know.
Yeah, or like someone like Marillo, you know.
She's young and she's got a lot of support. She's very vocal, yep.
And she's also very strongly in that sort of left bucket.
Very strong left. So we'll see. I am also very curious to see how it all goes.
Well, I am so glad you came to share. Is there anything else that we should talk about this district before we?
I want to say, I want to tell you that I'm the most excited about District 1.
You are? Okay.
And I'll tell you why. Because in the history of Portland, only two people have ever been elected east of I-205. That, most of that land was annexed in the 70s and 80s, so it wasn't even part of Portland. Their infrastructure needs are very, very different out in Outer East Portland. And the candidates are very intriguing, and I'm really, and there's going to be three, which is one more than the whole history of Portland. So I am really excited. And I got to meet them, and I think they're all really interesting people.
We'll talk about interesting in terms of how much to the center has Portland got. That race is going to be amazing, because you've got really strong progressive candidates, and then other candidates that have chosen a different lane that are also strong, but we're going to see just how strong on November 5th, right? How can you confuse the 6th or the 5th?
It's coming right up. So, yeah, it's going to be intriguing overall. I'd say District 2, there were so many good candidates. That's why on our list, we have seven. We didn't even limit it to six. I think they had the strongest roster of.
That's not fair. You have to limit.
Just really interesting candidates.
You have to limit. That's the whole exercise. I'm just kidding.
You know what, our team, yeah, we didn't do it, and we didn't, we didn't tell you, we are not telling you how to rank, so. Do what you want.
And the takeaway too is like, like I was saying this to the other ones of these that we did, it's like, people just have to buckle down, get the pamphlet, get your computer out, and do some research.
You're going to have to do that.
Give yourself the time to do that.
My advice is, yeah, look at all the media sources, but also look, look at all the different groups, you know. Look at United for Portland, look at Revitalize Portland. Try to understand that a lot of the folks that are now middle or moderate, are, they're just you and me. They're people who have been here a while, and we've bought our first homes, and we're paying the taxes, and we're trying to have a good life, and we're raising kids. And the way that progressive has become doesn't fit right anymore. It doesn't feel like progressive is the word that we think it is anymore. Like, I think of that quote all the time from The Princess Bride. I do not think that word means what you think it means. Because that was how I feel, and it's a funky thing to feel that way when so many of us were like, we're the liberals, we're the lefties, we're the progressives, and now we're the moderates. Anywhere else in the world, we're super lefty, but here in Portland, we're like the moderates, the middle of the road. But I, and I don't know. I want to believe it's the silent majority that's out there, but we'll see.
Yeah, and I think there's been so many Portlanders that feel that way. And this election, for a lot of folks, is giving them finally like a mechanism to express that. The conversations around the candidates and this election in general are giving people that feel like you just described, like a way to sort of manifest all those feelings and get them out there and to talk to the neighbors about it, where before it was kind of like this really sensitive subject, I think, for years, where it's like, oh, wait, what's happening? Maybe, I don't want to, I want to speak differently about progressivism in Portland, but people couldn't really talk about it. There was nothing to attach it to other than, you know, maybe some private conversations with folks. But now with the election, it's kind of getting out there that, you know, people are just putting their political predictions on their sleeve a little bit more. And I think it's good for the city to have these conversations. So.
Yeah, I mean, there's a lot, we went, I've gone to a lot of candidates' forums. I know you have. There's a ton online. And I think it's been really interesting. I've also with the Mayor's Race, which is totally fascinating. I've attended a bunch of those forums, and it's super interesting. And I've been talking to my neighbors. I'm holding a neighborhood candidate forum or a ballot party, which we've done before, where we've all gotten together with our ballots and talked them through. And even in our group, you know, we had people that really identified as strong progressive, strong lefty, and we had people that said, "Well, I'm just not that, okay? Like, I'm, I'm, I guess I'm..." We had one guy who said, "Like, I guess I'm the conservative in this group." And he was like, "Don't hate me, but I really, I'm really uncomfortable with some of this." And others that argued with him, but it was so respectful. It was done with a lot of compassion for each other and willingness to listen, which again, gave me hope. If that's what this election results in, is people being willing to have those hard conversations and say, "Look, I really care about this, but I can also see your perspective," and vice versa, then maybe that's going to, you know, maybe that's ultimately, we'll all say, "Hey, I guess we did something good in Portland, coming up with this cockamamie mishmash of an untried, multiple-pronged charter reform." You know, maybe it'll turn out to be okay. You know, I wish we had taken it a little bit more contained, that we had said, "Okay, we're going to have, maybe it's 12 districts, but we're going to have one person per district, and we're going to have a strong city manager and a strong mayor, and we're not going to do everything all at once and have three per district," which I think is really confusing. And we asked the question of all the candidates, "How are you going to collaborate? How's it going to work?" And they all were like, one of them said, "Well, I guess we'll probably have like a phone call every week." And some of them, that really showed they hadn't even really thought through. Others actually said, "No, I'm sure that we are, this is the way I envision it. We're going to have a collaborative style. We're going to have a collaborative process. We're going to work together on a list of priorities for our district. Whenever I have an issue, I'm going to be checking with the other two." Like, some of them were much more clear. Some of them told us that they'd already been meeting with the other candidates and trying to figure out how they were going to coordinate together if they got elected. And we thought, okay, well, that's again, that's really showing that they've done a lot more homework and have really thought it through.
Yeah. Well, I really appreciate the work that you all did with 12 for PDx. I think it's really important, and it's just feels really good to know that Portlanders are stepping up to this moment and trying to make the most out of this election and move the city forward. So thanks so much, Mia Burke, for coming in.
Nice to see you, Jonathan.
All right.
Vote, 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 vote!
All right, see you next time.